The Mayor and City Council shall cause the Director's written recommendation to be made part of the record. Proponents? Minutes for presentation of data, evidence and opinion concerning the zoning decision. If all 10 minutes are not used, the proponents' remaining time may be reserved for rebuttal. Opponents of each proposed zoning decision shall be allowed a total of 10 minutes for presentation of data, evidence and opinion concerning each zoning decision. The presentation times may not be reduced, but may be extended by majority vote, provided they're expanded equally for proponents and opponents. Anyone wishing to speak must come to the microphone and give their name and address to the city clerk. Do not speak unless you have the microphone and have been recognized. And I understand we have a kind of a new rule starting this evening that there are cards available at the podium. And if you are speaking, we just need you to take a moment to take that card, fill it out, and make sure that we get it back to the city clerk before you head out of the room. Thank you. So with that, we'll call the public hearing to order. First up on the agenda is item 3317, PZ 2021 945 Parsons Drive and Deacon Lane, Shambly Park variance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Michelle Alexander, the Director of Planning and Development. The item before you is the variance on the Parsons Drive and Deacon Lane project. Excuse me, going in the wrong direction, not a good start. The applicant is a Toll Southeast company presented by their Laurel David or Woody Galloway this evening. The addresses are actually located at 4078 Carver Drive, 4079, 4073, 4057, 4288, 4022, 4046, and 4046 Parsons Drive. Those are the subject parcels. The request is to, is seeking an appeal to vary from the zoning code to allow buildings to be constructed not being non-concrete and steel building framing materials. So the code requires that if you are building, if you're building three stories or higher, it be constructed with concrete and steel building frame. The request is to conduct the construction with wood frame. The zoning is a planned unit development, the PUD. That means it has a complete packet of additional regulations specific to it regulating the project. The acreage is just a little over 30 acres, and the project itself is a mixed-use development that has townhomes, condominiums, apartments, and some non-residential components. Here are some of the details of it. This was just heard and approved by council this October 2021, and it included, as I mentioned, mixed-use components of townhomes, residential, multifamily, single-family, and about 20,000 square feet of non-residential. The petition before you tonight narrowly focuses on that aspect about the construction. The request is to have the construction be of wood framing instead of what the code requires, which is to be concrete and steel framing because of the height. So there are two buildings, they are five stories, so the variance would apply to those two buildings. The rest of the slides are just recalling the architectural, the exterior architectural of the different buildings involved. These are not part of the question, this is the exterior. The question is only regarding the construction materials. So all of this has been approved through the rezoning and the DCI process last fall. These are just some images of the existing site, where the properties are, these homes will be demolished, and the project will be, will take place on these properties. So staff has reviewed the request and is recommending a denial of the variance. If council does find reasons to approve it, we just recommend that if you do approve it, that you keep it conditioned to their Exhibit A that was approved December 15th as part of their rezoning package. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. I'll now ask if anybody wants to speak in favor of this, if they'll come to the microphone. You'll have 10 minutes.
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Woody Galloway with Galloway Law Group. Here representing Toll Brothers and the Shambly Park Development. As Michelle has indicated, the only thing that we're requesting is the ability to build the multifamily component out of wood frame construction. This variance has, is the same variance that all other multifamily developments have sought and received approval for up and down the corridor. It's, it's something that, that is economically needed to make the, the project make economic sense. The proposed construction will comply with the applicable state building codes and state fire codes as in accordance with the state law that was passed subsequent to the enactment of these requirements. I can go through the whole project, go through all the information, but y'all are very, very familiar with it. I want to be very brief and be glad to answer any questions that y'all have either now or during the subsequent consideration later in the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this development? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. 3318, PZ 2, PZ 2021 946, 3812 Donaldson Drive Stream Buffer variance.
Thank you. The subject parcel is 3812 Donaldson Drive. The applicant is Gail Mooney, Survey Systems of Atlanta. The request is to vary from the stream buffer ordinance so that they can encroach into the 75-foot impervious surface setback and additionally into the 50-foot no disturbance stream buffer. The zoning is neighborhood residential, that's a single-family residential district. The parcel acreage is about a half an acre. The proposed development is to construct a turnaround pad, so they're requesting to add a pad in the front of the house so that they can accommodate turning around parking. The image on the left shows the location of the pad in front of the house, and then the image on the right in the red square box shows how much the surface that they're proposing to put in front of the house, how it is in relation to the rest of the house. It winds up being approximately 220 square feet of new impervious surface into the buffer area. It'll be about 45 feet away from the edge of the rest of vegetation at the closest point. And I should mention also that the entire, almost the entire project is located in the stream buffer. So it was already built there, it was grandfathered, but there's very little opportunity to expand because of the existing buffer on the, on the site. And then these are images to help you see the existing conditions, the location of the drive, and then the location of where they had started construction to locate the Staff's recommendation is a denial of the variance. The staff, staff does recommend if you choose to, if you find grounds to approve it, we recommend that it, that the applicant conform to their site plan, and then we also recommend a second condition, that they prepare a specific mitigation plan to address all of the impact of any additional impervious surface. So that concludes the staff's report.
Thank you, Michelle. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this development, please come forward. Again, please make sure you fill out the card with your name and information and hand it to the city clerk.
I will. Good afternoon, or evening. My name is John Holmes. I'm actually the owner slash project manager of this property and this project. The reason why we're asking for the variance request is mainly for a safety issue, not only the convenience of parking, but an individual to pull into that home in a one-car garage, they would literally have to back out 130 feet on into, over, as you can see, a bridge, and then into the street. We felt that to be a little hazardous. So our request, again, for safety purposes, not just for convenience, is to go into the, to the, to the stream buffer, just to kind of prevent any issues and the convenience of this new future homeowner. So again, your, your decision would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none. Both of these items do come up later in the agenda. Council may or may not have questions for you at that time. Anybody want to exit the public hearing?
Motion to exit the public hearing?
Thank you. You have a motion from Councilmember Mason and a second from Councilwoman Robson, all in favor. Thank you, that carries unanimous. I'm gonna tap that because this tap was in honor of our mayor, who's sitting back there. This is his favorite thing to do. Call this meeting to order. Do we have any announcements and presentations this evening, John?
We do not.
Staff action items under city clerk, we have the approval of minutes from the public hearing, December the 9th, 2021. Anybody see any changes or anything needs to be made on those? City Council Public Hearing Work Session, December the 16th. Seeing none. City Council Regular Meeting, December the 21st. Nothing, good job, Sharon. We have, John, we have item two through six. Do we need to go over these individually, or do we take them all as a group?
We can take them as a group.
Is that okay with everybody? Thank you. Go ahead, John.
We have several appointments, the annual appointments for your consideration for Tuesday night, the first being general administrative appointments. I did want to point out that with the retirement of Joe Fowler, we appointed Wilson Morton and Downs as our city attorney last month, but this is the time to appoint them again for the year. So that is part of the general administrative appointments. Also, with the appointment of Wilson Morton and Downs, we are currently looking for a hearing officer, and we will be making a recommendation prior to Tuesday. We've talked to a few people, but we do not have a name for that yet. We are adding Erica Dove as an associate judge for your consideration as well. She has served as a solicitor for us and has done a very good job. She has recently been appointed to a judge position elsewhere and will be, we're recommending the same here. With the ethics review, or Ethics Committee, again, we ask all council members to review their appointments to ensure that they still live within the city and are eligible for consideration of the Ethics Committee. The Design Review Board, we actually have two appointments for consideration, and both of the incumbents in those positions have reapplied. We do have, I did want to point out that last year we had a vacancy, and we did appoint two people to fill that vacancy. We have an extra, had an extra seat available, so Paul Stovall and Christine Simonton were appointed through 2023. However, the two, the other two incumbents do need to be considered for reappointment. The Recreational Advisory Committee also has two appointments for consideration, and the two incumbents have asked to be considered. And finally, the Public Arts Commission, again, the incumbents have been asked for, have asked for reconsideration for those. Next month will be appointments for Discover Shambly, and we, I believe we have a presentation from Discover Shambly next month as well, and then those will be the annual appointments for the year.
Thank you, John. Any questions from council? We'll need to move forward with those nominations on Tuesday.
I will, do have one question. On the annual appointments, especially for the Ethics Committee appointments, can, are people limited to two consecutive terms, but then if they take a gap, can they be, somebody be reused or be reused by another councilman, or is it, how does that exactly work?
I'll have to ask our attorney for their interpretation on that, but it just says two consecutive terms, so I believe that they would be eligible, but again, I need to ask the attorney for that clarification.
Thank you, John. Any other questions?
One quick one for Mercy, for the Public Art Commission. Did you speak to Carla and Kate? Carla Fonseca and Kate Warner?
I don't believe Kate's name was put forward.
She's on the, yeah, she's on the, Carla and Kate Warner are down. I know Carla hasn't been active, and Kate left when, she wanted to put in the RFQ for the Arts Center. So those two are not really operating, those two are, Carla never resigned.
I think that was a mistake on my part, and I pulled an old document.
Yeah, pulled an old one, okay.
I'll update that to the word.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, we have to communicate with Carla, but she hasn't communicated with us, but just to let you know.
Thank you all. We'll move into the city manager's portion of the agenda. First item on, on the list is 2020 Census Appeal.
Thank you, Mayor. Kristin Goram has this item.
Thank you. So staff has been looking into, we, we received our census numbers, I think, later in the year in 2021. Of course, that process started much earlier. The total that came for Shambly's population was 30,164, and, and kind of based off of the total number of housing units that we have added both multifamily and single-family residential, as well as just kind of what we know from the data that we have on the city and how we see development occurring, and the fact that this number is actually lower than the 2019 projections, the estimate that the census puts out. We have reason to believe that there might be, have been an undercount, and so the purpose of this discussion is just to kind of outline the process that we would need to go through as a municipality to potentially appeal or question that result. I do want to just let you know that if we go through that process, there, the results of that will not impact the official 2020 count, it won't impact the delineation of House districts, it will not impact the apportionment of House district seats. What it will do if they find support in that appeal, the census, if they, if they find reason to support the appeal, is give us the opportunity to use that new number as a basis for federal funding opportunities moving forward, as well as factoring that into the next count in future years. So just wanted to leave that open to discussion. There is a pretty substantial process to go through, it's very GIS-heavy. Carlo Frey, our GIS manager, has been the one pulling most of this information together. He was very involved in the census process from the beginning. So we would have to do some internal review on our end, some data mining on our end to collect that information and provide it back to the census, but we have the ability to start that process anytime between now and June 30th, 2023.
And I would just add that it is a very technical process. It is not, you have to have technical reasons that you put forth that you believe for an undercount. It can't be based on other estimates that you may have or things like that. It's got to be something in the data that, that is an anomaly.
Can't use that.
Can't, can't use that.
Any questions from council?
How long of a process is it? Do you have any idea? I mean, they're taking cases through, through 2023. I'm not imagining it is fast.
It's not. The document for the process itself is about 115 pages long with instructions of exactly what we need to do. So if that gives you any indication, it is not just a form that we fill out, but like, like John said, it's a, it's a pretty technical process, so we would be using a lot of census data and having to kind of mine through that.
Do we know how much the federal funds that do in this work might be worth?
So I don't know. I think it's, it's gonna be, for example, both CARES Act funding and the American Rescue Plan Fund, those are all determined based off of not the census data, the, I believe, I can't remember the acronym for it, but it's the kind of off-year estimates that they do. So if there's any future federal funding that's coming down line, I know that the infrastructure bill being one of them, they'll pull that data. So depending on what the threshold is, I mean, I, I can't tell you how much it's gonna vary and how much that's gonna really impact us. I know that the current estimate is several hundred off from what was previously estimated in 2019, and between 2019 and 2022, that could be a lot more houses and residents that have moved into the city, so.
I will add that in our research, we found that of the 350 appeals last year, I think there was a total of less than 100 population change overall in the country. So it's a very strenuous and difficult process to, to change that number.
They make it very tough to appeal these things and to win, but, you know, at the same time, I had asked, just a little context, I had asked John right after the numbers came out, and we looked at it block by block, and some of them are just blatantly wrong, and especially in the Beaufort Highway plaster road corridor, I mean, entire neighborhoods that appears just, just weren't counted. So it's, I, I understand it's a very cumbersome process, and, and I don't know we'll have any luck working it, but I think it's worth a shot to, to try, because we want to make sure we count everybody that, that should have been counted.
Yeah, and I will say that Shambly's response rate was lower than the statewide response rate, so, and particularly in those census tracts that you're referring to, it's like 20% or less in some of those instances, so very low response rate in certain parts of the city.
Thank you for working on that. Any other questions from council? Moving on to the next item, Shambly Election Districts.
Thank you, Mayor. With the 2020 census numbers, our official population is 30,154, which has resulted in an average district population of four districts of 7,539. I listed here the current populations in the districts according to that census, and so there is a statistical difference between District 2 and 3 and the average. So because of that variation, it is something that we need to look at, redistricting, and I am happy to move forward with staff reviewing those numbers and making some recommendations, but I wanted to bring that to you in case you wanted to look at other options. We could bring in outside support for that, but I will share that our GIS department has already put together the information, and we hope to get this information out to the public so that you can see what we have and what each census block has in terms of population. So for instance, there's 1,400 people in this particular census block. So we, we do have the data and the information and the GIS ability to, to start to look at which blocks could be moved between districts.
And are there maps for Scenario 1, Scenario 2, and Scenario 3?
We don't really have a Scenario 2 and 3. Scenario 1, Scenario 1 is essentially moving these two blocks into 3, and these two blocks into 1.
All right. I like it.
And that does give you, the variation there, the highest variation is 4% from the average, so.
It was 4, because the way that this block, things work, it's a lot more than 4.
Right.
I'll give John those two blocks if he gives me the high.
So we do have the information that we can start to look at, and we'd be happy to come up with some recommendations, if you like.
When does the state mandate that you can make, that you need to make this change? Like how, like we knew where it was, and they said it was highly defensible, and now we're outside roads, I don't know what, it can't be the map that loud, but when that, of course, you said now, this scenario gives you that 4, that...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what, yes, 4 would be within the, the variation that they would be comfortable with. And it's really, it's, it's a matter of looking at your maps and seeing where, where your population bases are. Again, one of the things with Shambly's population is, we do have very large tracts or census blocks that have very large populations, and those, those can swing, you know, the variation greatly if they move between districts. So as far as timing, I'm not aware, I can look into that, but I believe we're, we're well within that time now.
Nothing helping that happen on the downside between 3 and 4?
District 4 is actually statistically the closest to the average, and so any changes to District 4 would actually push it over.
The red dot that's way over there on the right near Mercy.
I have no idea.
First, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Who's going second? So how does change in our census affect this?
It would not.
Okay. And this is not something that we're going to necessarily go on this month?
You don't have to. It's just a question for council, as how you would like to proceed with this.
Okay.
They cut up pretty, what else do you need, what else do you need to move forward and just give that to those, so by the time two years old, yeah?
If you'd like us to prepare some, some options, we can bring those to you next month, and, and you could look at those, and...
And will we be going back down to the state?
I don't, I don't believe we have to do that this year. I will look into that, but I believe that we can move, with the census, I believe that we have the ability to make those changes within the city.
Well, they're just getting, that's great, star catcher's game, yeah.
Yeah.
As far as moving the blocks, right?
Very good. Any other questions from council? All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is a budget resolution to confirm the allocation of the American Rescue Plan Act funds for 2021.
I'll take this one over here. So if you recall, we received a little over $5 million last year, 5.6 to be precise. Part of that process, obviously, we've been in this limbo land waiting for the final guidance, which was issued on January 6th. It's 500 pages long, so I'm trying to work through that and give you guys some answers on what we can do with those funds. It's, it's great reading, I'm really enjoying it. But as a result, we do need to go ahead and amend the 2021 budget from last year to go ahead and set up a fund. This will all be captured in a separate fund. We didn't do that because we didn't have any expenditures ready, we didn't want to go ahead and preemptively do that before we had that final guidance issued. So this is just creating the fund, it's Fund 230, American Rescue Plan Act Fund. This is in alignment with the state chart of accounts. All of the expenditures and revenues associated with this federal funding will be captured in that fund. This is simply just capturing that revenue source for 2021. And then on the next slide, we will be doing the same thing for 2022, but capturing it as budgeted fund balance and rolling it into this year. The 2022 budget was created without this fund established, so that's all that this is doing right now. It's not capturing any expenditures, it's just capturing the revenue that we've already generated. So we'll come back to you with more information on the final guidance next month. We're gonna update that memo, get it back out to you guys for your review, hopefully in the next week, so.
Just for some history on that, for those that may not know, we expected this to be out much longer ago, and we've been waiting on this guidance for quite a while, and they did make some significant changes within the guidance as to what they consider eligible.
They did, yeah, they did, and I will say, from what I've seen so far, thankfully, it's, for the most part, it's more flexible, which is good, particularly on the capital side of things. It's just gonna require some dissertation writing and a lot of just... of things. It's just gonna require some dissertation writing and a lot of justification for major expenditures, which we will do certainly. But we're just trying to make sure we're checking all the boxes and give you guys the right answer on what we've proposed and what might need to change.
And some of the justifications have changed, so we'll have to review our projects and make sure they fit.
And they still, we're still being held to the same deadlines as...
Same deadlines. So we do have three years with the funds.
Yep.
Any other questions from council? Kristen, does that mean we just tackled item number four as well?
Yes.
Very good. I love it. I love it. Next item up on the agenda, Art Center Business Plan.
Thank you, Mayor Mercy. Montgomery will handle this item.
Good evening, everyone. Part of the 2022 budget development, we had a good dialogue around the current City Hall, which is soon to be vacated, and some proposed discussions we've had in the past about it potentially becoming an art center. And you provided direction at that meeting to prioritize the development of a business plan. We received two submissions for the scope of work Consult Econ Incorporated and Keen Independent Research, who are two of the three finalists for a previously executed request for qualifications. So staff recommendation is to proceed to contract with Consult Econ for the scope of Art Center Program Analysis, including vision engagement and some programming and partnerships, as well as the management and business plan and financial pro forma, including the operational analysis and financial analysis. Consult Econ has done a significant amount of work in our area, as well as the southeast and across the country. Their staff brings a lot of expertise, and they've done over 30 projects here in the state, including working with some notable folks like the Telfair Museum of Art and the Museum of Design in Atlanta. The fiscal impact is $64,500, which is their proposed cost. They also proposed inclusion of architectural design work for an additional cost of $46,665. Staff recommendation is to proceed with the completion of the business plan before we move into pursuing design services.
Was that it? You called me off guard there. Did they have any representatives here tonight?
They do not.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Karen's excited.
Karen's excited. I'm excited as well. Love it. Next up is a resolution in support of the Mayor's Monarch Pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to support, join, and remain a member of the Mayor's Monarch Pledge program. And the City of Shambly must pledge and commit to three action items each year: education and support the community to help restore the habitat of the Monarch Butterfly. We've been a member for many years now.
Questions from council? Have we been able to keep up with those requirements?
Yes.
Very good. Next up is the Development Incentive Strategy. That sounds interesting.
So we met collectively with the City Council and DDA, as you all well know, back in the fall to have a conversation about development incentive strategy. So our approach to date has served to reach the goals up on the screen, including increasing property values, providing quality housing options, and several other identified economic development goals. We met in the fall to discuss the value and content of developing a strategic approach to development incentives to both communicate to the public and to developers how and why we use those development incentives. So the proposed policy that was presented for conversation in the fall and has been amended to take into consideration feedback creates a policy that would serve as guidance, not necessarily in any way a guarantee that a project will receive tax incentive. The DDA is a separate authority with their own ability to provide those development incentives, but the council and DDA obviously share the collective goals of quality economic development that aligns with our master plan and other planning documents. So on the screen are listed the prerequisites that exist currently and would continue, obviously, within the policy guidance. And then the articulated goals would be creation of jobs, housing diversity, public infrastructure investment of a significant impact, historic preservation, a new concept or catalyst project, and a project that goes above and beyond environmental conditions that would necessitate remediation, or goes above and beyond in achieving sustainability goals. So the agenda packet includes a specific policy with details on each of these as guidance for consideration.
Very good. Questions from council?
I'm gonna stand that the housing diversity portion is the part where affordable housing is contained.
Yes. So the policy includes recommendations that correlate to housing set-asides that are incentivized, and the housing set-asides are tied to income levels. Housing developments would be required to fulfill those expectations in order to receive the development incentive. But there is a provision for exceptions for projects that provide housing that also would experience significant environmental costs to the development of their project, or choose to invest significantly in public infrastructure, or create a significant amount of jobs. And then that requirement of providing incentivized housing at different rates would be waived pending consideration by the DDA.
The fine print is in the packet, the agenda packet.
I'm aware.
You don't? Oh, fine print.
Fine print. It's a public hearing. We're having a public discussion.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mercy.
Thank you.
As I've said before, guidelines are a good thing to have, and especially in this line of work. And oftentimes, if you don't have them for yourself, others will impose them upon you. So I look forward to having more discussion on that. We'll move right into the Development Department items. These were the items that came up earlier in the public hearing. First up is PZ 2021 945 Parsons Deacon. Anything from council on this?
Question from Shell. I'm assuming the way the presentation was, that really the only condition that you need read is basically, doesn't have to do with any of the other components on there. We're just gonna approve or deny the application regarding that one specific item?
Yes, sir, correct. We only referred back to the original site plan.
Those stay in place. We don't have to reiterate those.
We do not tie it or address any other matter.
Okay.
I have questions for the developer. So can you come back up? It's been a while since we approved the BCI, et cetera. So I'm gonna ask you to remind me about these apartment, these two apartment buildings. The first floor, they are not proposed to have any retail space at all, right?
No, currently they're not. We aggregated all the retail space as it's done.
And from the picture of the elevation of what this is gonna look like, it still looks like that bottom floor is higher inside?
Yes. And it could be, where, these will go, they will go back through the design again. So we, as you recall, one of the conditions of the design was that the retail and multi-family had to go back through the design.
Okay, so essentially what's gonna happen is that the first floor apartments are gonna have the, they're gonna shrink. The ceiling, the ceiling's gonna come down properly.
Well, now you want the flexibility to have.
Well, I'm asking because at least what we've done with other apartment buildings so far in our mixed-use form is have them at least podium-built. And I'm wondering if that's possible here. Not sure that it's worth it, but, because there's not really gonna be retail on the bottom floor.
We're gonna end up redesigning the apartments. There's a different developer now. Toll Brothers has taken that in-house. Toll Brothers, apartment building is now doing the apartment development. And so it will be redesigned with the same architecture, but they will be redesigning some aspects of it. And we'll go have an opportunity to redo that.
Yeah, but you're asking us to approve the variance, which it will be designed to. So that's why I'm asking these questions now.
But whether it's one or the other is gonna change. What you, that's likely to change. But the interior, you can't tell the difference between making steel construction and wood grain construction, especially from that.
And there's, so there's...
But it is very important for the, we're at a closing stage where we're headed to a closing at the end of the month. And this is one of elements that the city has been towards and identified we need to develop.
Yeah. And this, this street actually does have a slope, which I can tell because this corner doesn't have a stoop. And then as you go down the street, the entrances have stoops, entrances to the bottom floor, pardon.
Yes, in our architecture, the hundreds of you that are asking questions about it.
Someone showed in that.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, I'm just...
You're saying that, yeah.
Trying to reimagine, because like I said, it's been a little while.
Right.
And so when they get redesigned or whatever, what is their fire rating gonna be?
It would be about the state law. And you know, the way the state law went into effect says that you can't require something that is beyond what the state law requires. And we will, we will follow that and...
Is that everything, council lady?
Yep.
Any other questions from council for the applicant? All right, thank you for being here. Item number PZ 2021 946 3812, Donaldson Drive Stream Buffer variance. Any questions from council?
I have a comment to make. I'm well aware of this site, and I'm well aware of the problems that it has had in the past with the driveway and with the collapse of that, the drainage and all that stuff. And I, you need that parking. You really do. And I just wanted to say that.
I will comment that it seems like that parking space could have some pervious surface-type materials, whether it's brick with larger gaps and stuff. Because it's not very, it's not a large portion of the driveway. And it would help, I think that's probably referred to in what the staff wants as far as some sort of mitigation plan. But, and I'd like that it's, you're not like clearing out trees or vegetation to add this turnaround. It's already part of the existing front yard, which probably, on a hill, which is probably not the best for stormwater detention anyway. It's probably flowing right through there anyway. So I don't know how much impact it will actually give by adding this to the area. Anyway, I'm glad that that project, that site has been, has been, it's been worked on. I'm not gonna say eyesore, but it has been in need of repair for a while, and I'm glad that it's being done, so.
I do have one question, though. Is this parking pad going to follow the slope of that red line or tape or whatever that is? It's gonna be sloped downhill like that? You're still gonna need a retaining wall, though, aren't you?
So we, the proposal is to have a 46 max height retaining wall, 40-inch grade, up to 40-inch grade. So we will have a retaining wall. Yes, ma'am. To answer your question, it won't slide down. It'll be as level as possible. It may have a slight slope.
Yeah.
But we do have some form of mitigation in terms of erosion as well, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other comments? Thank you for being here. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
On to Public Works, G.M.O.U. for SiOps coordination.
Good evening, Courtney Fresh, Public Works. I'm here tonight because we received notification by GDOT, probably in the fall, that they were replacing their RTOP program with SIGOPS. And really essentially what it does is RTOP, as you know, previously just covered Peachtree Boulevard and Beaufort Highway. SIGOPS is now looking at all of the signals within the city. And they're doing this in order to help with traffic flow in the peak hours in, on all approaches of an intersection. So actually, in November, GDOT went ahead and replaced RTOP. So SIGOPS is actually already underway. And this is just a MOU that needs to be signed. We will still have the maintenance and operation control, but they will be assisting us with looking at routine maintenance, as well as if there's any issues happening in a traffic signal, they can certainly go into their software and assist us.
Very good. Questions from council?
I hope that it could be a good thing.
I think it will, especially, I did meet with them today, the team today, and we already talked about the weather this weekend and how they would assist us in handling the weather, if any inclement weather were to affect any of our signals. So we'll see, we'll kind of work out the kinks if there's any weather this weekend and continue to coordinate with them and their consultants.
Very good. Do you also have the next item up, Chattahoochee Riverkeeper MOA for in-stream trash traps?
I do. So Chattahoochee Riverkeeper actually reached out to the city requesting to install two trash traps, one in Arrow Creek at Dresden Park and the other one in a tributary of Nancy Creek in Huntley Hills Park. For a one-year period, there is an option for us to either extend that contract or to purchase potentially. They are responsible for the installation, maintenance, data collection, and removal of the traps. They did tell us that they would be willing to provide us with quarterly reports of the trash that's been collected and how much of that has been able to be diverted to recycling. The traps will take a few weeks to manufacture and be installed. But if you would like, we can also do an education piece on this in the parks, notifying what this not, not the prettiest-looking structure is in the stream.
When we were doing the cleanup behind, off the Boyd Drive, behind the Bowman Alley, they were putting the creek back there. I'm assuming that creek connects to Huntley Hills somehow, somewhere. And I thought that's when they mentioned, the Riverkeepers were there, if you're in Virginia.
They were.
And they mentioned that. I don't know if that's the location or, yeah.
No, that's in Huntley Hills.
They were looking in Huntley Hills Park, yes. But we also know of a few other areas where if they're willing to give us more, we can certainly install more.
And this is solely trash, not water formity or anything like that?
This is just collecting of debris, yes.
Floating debris typically.
With the work we're doing at Arrow Creek Park now, address then, would this, how is this gonna fit into that?
So the Arrow Creek Stream Restoration, actually, the scope of the project is from the dam south to the St. Hyatt Bridge. And where this trash trap would be installed is farther, I guess farther north at the culvert of Dresden Drive. So it should not, there'll be two things happening, but they should not overlap with each other.
Shouldn't be simultaneously. That shouldn't be an issue.
And the purpose of this is really, is just to collect trash. It's not to figure out where it's coming from?
We would love to figure out where it's coming from. I mean, there's a variety of sources. But truly, the purpose is to collect the trash so it doesn't end up going into the Chattahoochee River. And also an educational opportunity just to make folks aware of, you know, what happens when you throw trash out your window or whatnot.
It's not pretty, is it?
It is not pretty.
There is no cigarette butt fairy.
Courtney, do you know how often they actually check it?
I do not know how often they check it. I can get back to you on that easily.
I would love to know how often they actually come out and...
Okay. They, I know they have a couple of these already installed in the City of Atlanta. And so I imagine they can just, it's probably similar. So I'll figure that out.
I would imagine it's, that's a bigger after like a rainstorm. That's what I've noticed at the water retention pond, all of a sudden, you know, there's a ring of trash that's around it, right, you know, right where the water rises up and then it drops down.
Well, if you remember, we were doing the cleanup, Murphy Cantler, Chattahoochee was there, the Chattahoochee Riverkeepers, the Chalmers Tongas, the big rainstorm that, remember, that sunk into the dirt.
Right.
And they had to pull it out because of the rainstorms dropped so much trash.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So...
Pushed it under.
Yeah, pushed it under, then bring the crane in.
I'm sure that they take into, into account volume of water and stuff like that, but how well does that stand up to 10-foot difference in...
I cannot speak to that at this point, but I will certainly ask them when there's a heavy flow of water, what happens with this structure.
And it pushes it under the water and buries it, just like you were just saying. You know, it can, because what happens, it backs up and then it actually, the water can't move through it.
Right, okay, yeah. Right, okay, yeah. I'm just...
We will not be responsible in pulling that up, though.
These are becoming more common throughout the region, and it is, it is through the efforts of the Riverkeeper, because the maintenance on these things and the ability to take care of those types of issues have been an issue or a concern of staff in the past. So the Riverkeeper has done a good job of really kind of becoming a specialist.
None of these...
It's a good start.
None of these measures are 100% and none of these measures can take every scenario and, weather scenario into consideration and work in every single time. You know, you're just, you're just looking to mitigate what you can, what you can't.
Definitely a good starting point.
And honestly, I mean, taking the trash out of there, fantastic, love it, but the education piece will come with this to tell the residents what is happening, how much we're collecting.
Very visually, yeah.
Hyper impactful.
Very good. Thank you, Courtney.
Thank you so much.
All right, looks like we have a second read that will need to be taken care of next week. Nothing under mayor and council this evening. Did I skip it? No, I didn't. What?
I don't know.
Did I miss something? Nope, I'm good. Which brings us to citizen comments. Anybody in the audience have anything they want to talk about? Bob, come on up.
I just wanted to say that for maybe the very first time that everybody on the DIAS is dressed better than I am. No, but congratulations on our two newest members of the council and thank you, Brian, for taking the laboring oar for the city. So we're excited to work with you all.
Thank you so much, Bob. Anybody else?
Don't forget to fill out your card, Mr. Bob.
Yeah, yeah, fill out your card, Bob. You'll get us all in trouble if you don't fill out your card.
Is this the same one? The pastor?
Any other comments from the citizens?
I like it.
See, none. I would just again like to welcome Elmer and Jimmy up here to the DIAS with us, and we are so glad to have both of you here with us. Look forward to working with you over the next few years. Thank you so much. All right, that's it. We are, don't believe we have executive session, do we? I hope we don't. How do we do, mayor? Did good. Got a thumbs up from the mayor. All right, we're out of here. Have a good night, everybody.